Good morning and Happy Valentine's Day. This is the Wednesday, February 14th, 2018, Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. If you have not yet found the right gift for Valentine's Day, I have a few suggestions for you. You can purchase a Valentine Zoo Pal from the Sedgwick County Zoo, and that includes a private couples' encounter with one of our rhinos. Tickets to Death by Chocolate at Exploration Place are also still available. That event will be held on Saturday, the 24th of February. And tickets to any of the upcoming Interest Bank Arena shows are also a great treat for your Valentine. On the agenda today, commissioners will consider a few appointments, an agreement regarding Project Access, an update from Interest Bank Arena, a resolution for bonding for bridges, a resolution regarding text draw on aviation, and one item on the Board of Bids and Contracts. I'd like to also remind you that Sedgwick County offices will be closed on Monday in observation of President's Day. Emergency services will still be available by dialing or texting 911. And lastly, commissioners, I have one video I'd like to share with you regarding the North Junction project.
I-135, I-235, and K-254 were built in the mid-sixties to early seventies. K-96 was built in the early 1990s. Today, over 93,000 vehicles per day use that interchange. Over 9,100 are semi-trucks. By 2050, over 160,000 vehicles per day are projected to use the North Junction.
You want freight coming to you, and you want freight to be able to get to the world. People of South Central Kansas understand that essentially it's vital that we improve that choke point or bottleneck.
You have cars just lined up, stopped, engines running, gasoline wasted. It's not cost efficient, it's not economical. Well, I thought we had a very good meeting with the Kansas Department of Transportation. We were gratified in the meeting to learn that the green phase, which is a foundational stage for this project, is a go, and work should be started, you know, later in 2019. The gold phase and the orange phase to follow will be the phases where we really see some progress, but we have to start at the foundation. We need the citizens really to reach out when and where they can to both congressmen, senators, and state legislators to say that this is important to them. This is something that has serious safety consequences for all the people here in South Central Kansas, and we want everyone to know that we're working for your safety, but also to improve transportation and to improve what is truly a quality of place issue.
And with that, Chairman, I will let you begin the meeting.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you very much. And first of all, I want to thank Tony Giuliani, who is on our communications staff, and all the members of the communications staff that put that video together. It depicts a very big concern that we have here in Sedgwick County. Also, I'd like to welcome all of the folks that are here in the audience today. I'd like to welcome those that are joining us by TV and those that are joining us on the Internet. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for February 14th, 2018. Madam Clerk, first item.
invocation: To be led by Pastor Christopher Gooding, Central Community Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
On behalf of our Senior Pastor Bob Beckler, it is our honor and privilege to represent you today in lifting you in prayer at this time. Please let us pray. Father, we call upon your name, powerful and matchless, asking for your blessing over these men and the proceedings conducted here today. Father, I lift Richard, David, Dave, Michael, and Jim, as well as other community and government leaders throughout our towns, cities, and state. May your grace and mercy overflow in their lives in a manner that reflects your love to all they encounter in the course of their work. Give those an authority, wisdom in every decision. Help them to think with clarity. Grant them discernment and common sense in order to be strong and effective leaders. Help them to lead and govern with integrity, and may their integrity guide them and keep them focused on the task at hand. Lord, be merciful to give us leaders who are spirit-filled and follow your example. Direct their steps according to your word, for their decisions have a great impact on the lives of the people of this community whom they serve. Dear God, be their defender and protector. Keep them always on guard. Help them to be strong and courageous, standing firm in their faith, and influencing others for your kingdom. Encourage and strengthen them, dear Lord. Give them wisdom they need inside and outside the walls of this chamber. Help them to have courage and faith in you, no matter what they're facing today. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much for the invocation today. We appreciate it very much. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Next item.
Public agenda.
We have one speaker signed up this morning, Mr. George Theo Harris. I want to welcome you to the meeting today, and please approach the podium, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, and Happy Valentine's Day to all. I'm going to talk to you guys, it's probably a city matter, but they make you wait two weeks over there, and you guys let us come right in, so, but I've heard it's come over here too, so I want to talk about that. I think everyone needs to know that no one's going to forget Andrew Finch. I mean, that's been a deal that we don't want to forget, and of course, we don't want to forget. I know a couple of the officers that are in professional standards over there, and they're going to be very transparent on this, as they are on all items over there. They just fired a police officer over there, over that shooting incident with the little girl, and mind you, the dog was not licensed there, but that doesn't mean anything, but they did, they'll fire their own, so I think, I think they're going to do the right thing. I think we need to just let the process play out. I just went and talked with the district attorney, or tried to, and they won't tip their hand. If we knew that there was two months, a month, three weeks, that they were going to come to some kind of resolve, maybe we could slow things down and let people just let the process do what the process does, but I'm kind of concerned that we're worried about the officer, and to what end do we need to know his name? Well, I don't know that that, I mean, I actually wanted to know his name, and my fiancee said, "Well, what do you want to know for?" Well, I just wanted to know if I knew the officer, because I know several officers. That's, mine was inquisitive, but to know his name doesn't help the situation. I think it's going to, they're going to do a great job figuring this out, and I think we just need to be patient, and like I said, it's going to be so transparent. This whole, this whole deal started with the Ohio guy. The Ohio guy called the California guy who didn't call the police. The Ohio guy is the one that started this, and I think he's the most culpable, but I haven't really heard much about him, and I heard he used to live in that house that Andrew Finch was living at. That's where he got that address from. So if someone wants to go and picket someone, they ought to be going to Ohio and picket that 18-year-old, but I just want everyone to just be calm, be peaceful, and let, just let the process play out, and trust me, our city officials are going to do the right thing, and the DA is going to do the right thing. Just be patient. And then, on an unrelated matter, I'm on the animal board, and I'm actually the vice-chair, and I don't have a dog or a cat, I have a bird, and he doesn't like dogs or cats, or me for that matter, but right now, we have a dangerous dog, we have a dangerous dog, and then we have euthanization in the county, and there's nothing, nothing else, but we've had zero on euthanized and zero that have been deemed dangerous, so nothing and nothing. So I'm going to be introducing a potentially dangerous like the city did, so I hope that you guys can get behind that, and so we've got something, because there are some bad dogs, actually probably bad owners with those dogs, but we need to do something about that, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate your time today. Hey, does anyone else in the audience wish to speak this morning? Mr. Theo Harris was the only one that was signed up. Does anyone else wish to speak today? If not, Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, Special Meeting Minutes of January 23rd, 2018.
Thank you. Motion to approve special minutes for January 23rd, 2018, made by Commissioner Dennis, seconded by Commissioner Unruh. Discussion, seeing none. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item.
Appointments. Item B, Resolution Appointing James Roberts to the Eagle Township in the trustee's position.
Mr. Chairman Eric Yost, County Counselor, we have a couple of appointments this morning. Item B is a resolution appointing Mr. James Roberts to the trustee position in Eagle Township to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mr. Randall Wells. Eagle Township, of course, is in Chairman Dennis's district, and Chairman Dennis is recommending that Mr. Roberts be appointed. That term will expire on January 10 of 2021. I'm told that he is expected to be here this morning, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. It's my pleasure to nominate Mr. James Roberts to fulfill the uncompleted term on the Eagle Township Board that is in my district, and I would make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Mr. Roberts, welcome.
Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office at Sedgwick County Eagle Township trustee, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, welcome.
Just say a few words. Just say good morning, and I've lived in that area my entire life, and my folks have lived in that area my entire life, so anyway, we'll see what we can do and see what we can help out. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Next item.
Item C, Resolution Appointing George Dean to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging.
Mr. Chairman Eric Yost, County Counselor, item C is a resolution appointing former Representative George Dean to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging to fill the unexpired term of former Representative Mario Goico. Chairman Dennis is recommending that Mr. Dean be appointed to this for a term that would expire July 14, 2019. Paperwork says that he's expected to be here, but I haven't spotted George, maybe he's here, but I would urge adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. It's my pleasure once again to nominate Mr. George Dean to fill the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item.
New Business. Item D, Agreement with Central Plains Regional Healthcare Partnership, Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners, and the City of Wichita to partner with the Sedgwick County Division of Health under the Project Access Program.
Good morning, commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Director of Division of Health. This morning, I'm here with the agreement with Central Plains Regional Healthcare Partnership, Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners, and the City of Wichita to partner with the Sedgwick County Division of Health under the Project Access Program. And I did neglect to say that we do have the Executive Director, Philip Brownlee, in the audience today, as well as the Director of Project Access, Shelley Duncan. So Project Access is a partnership program that facilitates access to medical care, including needed prescription medications and medical equipment for uninsured, low-income residents of Sedgwick County, those who fall below 250% of the federal poverty guidelines. Project Access was created in 1999 and operates within the Central Plains Regional Healthcare Partnership and private organizations that identify individuals who may qualify for assistance. Additionally, many local physicians and hospitals have volunteered their time, and facilities and several pharmacies have offered prescriptions at a reduced cost to assist in serving these individuals. Funding for the 2018 project comes from a variety of sources, including the City of Wichita, and their donation is $200,000, Sedgwick County, $200,000, and United Way at $217,851, as well as private contributions and fundraisers, and they raised $215,000 last year. The $200,000 allocation in 2018 will be used to fund portions of numerous salaried positions, as well as pay for prescription and durable medical equipment. The contribution from Sedgwick County will supplement Central Plains Regional Healthcare Partnership for the underserved residents of Sedgwick County, that they can have access to medications and supplies and lessen the burden from chronic illnesses. Now, I have some numbers in 2017 as far as what they provided to the community. Project Access served 939 patients in 2017. Donated hospital care valued at over $6,470,000 so far. It's not the total tally of claims, haven't come in yet. Donated physician care was valued at over $1,818. Again, thus far, there's still claims coming in. They provided 377,545 in purchased and donated medications, as well as purchased 22,465 in medical equipment for patients with county and city funding. Health outcome surveys demonstrated a statistically significant improvement in patient-reported health status. Project Access continues to manage the donated coalition test project, coordinating 3,500 donated diagnostic tests for community clinic patients, and not requiring enrollment in Project Access. More than 3,400 diagnostic tests were distributed to clinic patients, and approximately 2,800 tests were utilized. MRI and CT scans remain in highest demand with a utilization rate of 98%. Other tests that were used at 90% or higher rate include sonograms and laboratory tests. I recommend that you authorize this agreement and authorize the chair to sign. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Adrian. Do I have any questions from the bench? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Does anyone in the audience?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready for a motion.
I'm sorry.
I will move that we approve the agreement and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Before we get into that, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we have a motion and a second, discussion. Commissioner Ranzau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the information you gave us there. I appreciate Shelley for being here. I will say that in our budget, we approved $175,000 for Project Access, not $200,000, so I'll be supportive of $175,000. I've spoken with Shelley about a variety of issues with respect to this, so I'm going to make a substitute motion that we keep the budgeted amount as previously planned, and we approve it in the realm of $175,000, or approve the agreement, but in the amount of $175,000.
Thank you, Commissioner Unruh, or Commissioner Ranzau. Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you. I don't know if you want to wait for a second before...
Let's find out if we got a second to that first before you speak. We have a motion by Commissioner Ranzau to maintain $175,000, a substitute motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion fails, lack of second. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to bring to light the fact that we discussed this, I believe, in staff meeting last November, and there was a consensus that we wanted to approve funding at the $200,000 level rather than what was approved in our budget process. The reason for that is that brings us up to what has been more of our historical level, and it also matches the city's contribution to what is really a very important and beneficial service in our community. I think this is, with the numbers that you gave to us of donated hospital and physician care, it's clearly a, it's clearly a good investment on the part of our money, so I will be very supportive of the motion, and I just want to thank the Executive Director and Shelley, the folks that run that agency, for their outstanding service to our citizens.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to echo the previous comments. I think, looking back, I think it was maybe late last year, we already approved $175,000. I think we did vote on that. Is that, can someone please remind me of that action item?
Well, we voted on it August 9th, right, for the budget adoption for $175,000.
All right, and that, all right, that, very good, very good. And so, again, I'm very supportive of the $175,000. I'm also supportive of the $200,000. I think that, just adding up those numbers that were given by Adrian just a moment ago, it was just under $9 million, the way I see it. I remember 2015, when we deliberated the 2016 budget, there was a community came out and showed tremendous support for Project Access. I remember that very well, and we have, we had supported it in 2015 at $200,000, because we did add $25,000, I think, that year as well. I remember that as well. I think I actually led that issue. So, again, I think that our budget is, is doing well enough at this point that $200,000 is something that I can certainly support this year, and I am grateful for the opportunity to do so today. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to publicly thank Shelley for everything that you guys do over at Project Access. I've been a huge fan since I was on the city council, and when Dr. Rozell was the Executive Director of the Sedgwick County Medical Society. They do so much good. It's, it's an incredible return on investment, and it's just an incredible resource for our community. And when I was Chair of the Health Committee in Topeka, and we talked about this, I said if every community in America had something like the Sedgwick County Medical Society and Project Access, Obamacare and a lot of expansion of government healthcare would not have been necessary. So I think it's great as the Board of Health that we're able to wrap our arms around this and bring it back to the former funding level, so thank you all. Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranzau.
Well, unfortunately, this puts me in a very difficult position, but I'm going to have to share additional reasons why I'm not going to support this day. First of all, to say $200,000 is our historical norm would not be accurate. The last eight years, the funding has been $187,000, $250,000, $232,000, $208,000, $208,000, $200,000, $175,000, $175,000. So only once in the last eight years has it actually been $200,000. So there really is no historical norm, because it's fluctuated up and down, and the vast majority of the years has been a little bit less than the City of Wichita. But how we get here matters to me, and why, how this was initiated matters to me. I've been speaking up about a variety of things in the past, and it's difficult and uncomfortable, especially on issues like this, which, this isn't about the issue itself, which is very compelling. But just yesterday, I had two local elective officials and two citizens, one had, I went to a meeting, had two elected officials tell me the same thing, and then two citizens at a basketball game thanking me for my efforts to fight about, in fighting for what's right. So, and I said some of these things in, in the meeting in November, but, you know, this was initiated when, I think, when Shelley came around, and just, just to talk about and thank us for the support, but this was initiated by Commissioner O'Donnell. He suggested to increase it $25,000. I heard a rumor that it was because you want to make the mayor happy and spread goodwill to the City of Wichita, so I asked him about it, and he confirmed, yes, I want to have good relationships, and this is the way to do it. I'm sorry, but as good as a program as this is, and it is, I've actually worked with a physician, we participate in this program at times, getting there this way so a commissioner can basically influence pedal is wrong, and is not appropriate. I would actually encourage Project Access to consider taking $175,000 and then going to the public and ask and say, "Hey, we need another $25,000." I think you would find lots of people to say, "That's the right way to get it, and we'll support you. In fact, if you do that, I'll commit $100 of my own money to it." Because why we do things and how things are initiated matters to me. Now, I have, some, I think they're the minority, but there are some people who say, "Listen, this is not good for you politically, you should not do this," and da-da-da-da-da, but I think it's the right thing to do. I'll, I'll lose an election before I lose my soul. And I mean that. I care about this community, I care about the taxpayers, and I care about what's right and wrong. And that's why I do what I do, and I will continue to the very last breath I have, the very last moment I serve here on this commission. So, regrettably, I'll have to not vote again, I will vote against this, but I want you to understand my position. I fully support $175,000, and I thank you both for coming here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to support the motion. I want to use Commissioner Ranzau's words, that it is compelling what we're doing. The return on investment is great. If we look back historically, we were, as Commissioner Ranzau stated, we were much higher than the $200,000 in the past. We were $250,000, $232,000, $208,000, $208,000. It wasn't until 2016 that, that the cuts started being made. So I think that at this point, it is time for us to restore those cuts that were made in 2016, and we did discuss this in November, I think it was November 21st in an open meeting. We've, we've been discussing it for some time. The impact on our community by having the doctors being able to contribute their time, their talents, to help the folks that would end up either not having healthcare or would be relying on the county in other ways is also compelling, so I will be voting in favor of this. Is there further discussion? Chairman, Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'm going to be supportive of this also. It's, I think the agency does a great job in our community. It's, I think the agency does a great job in our community. Our citizens who have hit the wall in terms of access need this service in order to get medical attention sometimes in, in extreme and emergency situations. There, there may be other ways of accomplishing this same, same goal, but I think that this is proven, this agency has proven itself in their ability to provide services to a lot of people. They have the buy-in from the medical community itself and from the hospitals to provide support. My vote has nothing to do with anyone else's conversation. I, I think that's just superfluous comment. I, I am not doing this because someone else suggested it. I'm doing it because it's the right thing to do for our citizens. So I'm, I'm, I'm supportive, and I'm, and I'm very thankful that I think our commission will show its support. So I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank Commissioner Unruh. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to clarify for the public a couple of other points about the funding for Project Access. They used to get $100,000 a year from Co-Bank, but ended in 2014. They received a one-time gift for $50,000 from Kansas Health Foundation, but they have not received anything since then, also in 2014. But in 2015 through '17, there was some money from United Health, Methodist Health Ministries, went from 30, now to 20, then down to 10, so reducing funds. And it looks like this year, no money is planned from United Methodist Health Ministries. And so there's, there's reductions in funding from other organizations. At the same time, their fundraising started in 2012, went from 30,000, and it's increased every year. And in 2018, they're planning $215,000 of private sector funding. So I guess there's a trend that's happening in terms of them going out to the public and trying to get more support. So I wanted to make sure that that was known by the public. And then, second of all, we did match the city in 2015, we matched the city in 2016. We were lower than the city by 25,000 last year. I think, I don't know exactly how that happened, but nevertheless, we were, we were 25,000 last year, less than the city. But in '15 and '16, we were equal with the city. So I want to make sure the public is aware of, of our, of our financial history there. So thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, I'm, I'm not as interested in whether or not we're matched the city. I'm interested in making sure that we do what's right. Any further comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next item, please.
Item E, Quarterly Intrust Bank Arena Report.
Morning, Lindsey.
Good morning, commissioners. I think you should have handouts coming to you shortly with the presentation itself. Lindsey Poircso, your CFO, I'll go ahead and jump into it while your handouts get passed out. We are here to give you an update this morning on Intrust Bank Arena's performance through the final quarter of 2017. With us today is A.J. Beleski, the general manager for the arena from SMG. And of course, thanks to him and his team, I'll be delighted to share how well the arena did last year later in the report today, and I want to thank him and his staff for all of their hard work in making the arena a success. As a reminder, today's report focuses primarily on the operations of the facility itself, and along with an update on the reserve fund. The county's quarterly financial report was presented last week, and that presents information on the county's facility and its financial activities on our books in a slightly different way. And so if folks are interested in that, that report is available out on the county finance website. And now we'll jump into the report, and I want to thank Micheline Stokes from the county manager's office for her work in preparing this for us today. So as with past reports, we'll walk through just a quick reminder of what the agreement is, a status update for part of that agreement that we have with City of Wichita. We'll talk about the arena's sales tax reserves, including its authorized uses, and where it stands now at the end of 2017. And then A.J. will come and talk with you about some of the exciting things we have to look forward to. So again, SMG was hired in 2007 as the building operator to oversee the business and management aspects of the arena. They will promote, operate, and manage the facility to ensure provision of high-quality management services, enhancing the use and enjoyment of the arena. And of course, under a unique arrangement between county, a public entity, and SMG, the private entity, SMG actually would absorb a loss if we had any. And of course, there are some profit-splitting measures within that contract, and we'll talk about those later on in the report and how that fares for the county this year. So in terms of the information you'll see throughout the report now, we'll talk about ticket sales and how those compare year-over-year, community affairs, and then a financial summary. So jumping right into it then, this slide shows 2017 performance versus 2016 performance in terms of ticket sales. You can see that in 2017, there were a total of 94, I'm sorry, 94 performances with total attendance of 338,190 folks and tickets sold of 300,280. Each of these categories is slightly less than 2016, when we had 100 performances, 371,280 in attendance, and tickets sold of 319,498. But when we look at gross ticket sales, you'll see that actually it was a considerable increase in 2017 over 2016, with receipts of about 11.99 million versus 9.84 million last year, or an increase of about 2.15. That does factor into then the average cost per ticket sold that also is higher in 2017 than in 2016 at $39.92 versus $30.80 last year. So then, looking at a slightly different section of data, we'll look at community affairs. You can see that there were fewer community groups volunteering in concession stands. Again, you have fewer performances. It does correspond to fewer folks being able to volunteer in man those concession stands. As such, there was a lesser amount paid out to those groups. Spending with Sedgwick, Kansas, or spending with Sedgwick County and Kansas companies actually was pretty level. It's a slight decrease, but at about 3.9 million for both years. Sales tax paid did go up from about 1.1 million to about 1.3 million. There was one more arena presentation and tour at 18 total in 2017, and the number of local events and activities did go down. So this next slide, I don't necessarily want to belabor. It goes into all of the details about the different types of income categories that the arena has that we'll talk about over the next few slides, so I just maybe ask that you flag slide number six to come back to refer to it down the road. I would point out, though, net building income is going to be kind of our hot point of discussion later on. That is, when we take everything into account, kind of how do we fare at the end of the day? What's our bottom line? And so I would point that out, that definition out as a key for when we move on into the presentation. So for the fourth quarter only, so October, November, and December of 2017, the arena had 25 performances, though there were 27 events. Typically, you'll see that number is kind of flipped. We'll have more performances of a particular event. The reason is that other category that you see there, they're, they're not performances, and so we simply don't count those. You can see, again, those events themselves generated about 1.1 million for direct income. There is other operating income that comes from things like Select a Seat of just more than 500,000 for total gross building income of $1,656,221. When we take into account those indirect expenses that are listed at the bottom of the slide, that leaves the fourth quarter alone to have net building income, again, kind of that bottom-line figure of $301,231 for 2017. So then, let's look at 2017 as a whole. And again, we're going to talk about this bottom-line number. There were 94 performances, we've already talked about that. The total event income then was 4.1 million, applying all of the other categories that you can see listed here. At the end of the day, net building income was $1,829. And this is where it gets fun, because now we know what the county, what kind of the bottom line was for the arena. Under the contract we have with SMG, SMG is entitled to the first $400,000 of this figure. That leaves another $600,829 that we split with them. So what that means is that the county will receive a check for $300,414 to deposit back into the sales tax reserve as a part of the overall performance of the arena in 2017. So that is certainly good news. Just as a reminder, last year, that figure was $140,135. So certainly, an increase that's welcome and shows what a great year this really was for the arena. So moving on through the rest of the slides, we'll take a look at comparing 2017 data with 2016 data. So again, there were 94 performances in 2017 versus 100 in 2016. You can see the number of events, and overall, net event income in 2017 versus 2016 was greater by $386,336. So these next few slides actually show us this type of information, but in a slightly more broken-down fashion. So other operating income also increased in 2017 over 2016 by about $81,000. Total gross building income increased by $468,000. Taking into account indirect expenses, again, those items that are not necessarily tied directly to an event itself, we had an increase of about $147,000 over 2016. So in 2016, costs were 4.79, in 2017, they were 4.94 million. And again, the bottom-line figure then, net building income did increase in 2017 over 2016 by $320,561. So net building income in '16 was $680,268. Again, in 2017, it's $1,829. So shifting gears a little then, looking at the status of the arena's sales tax reserves. Again, this is the fund that was created after the one-cent sales tax, which funded the construction of the arena, and so those, anything that was left over was put in there. And throughout the years, as we receive checks like these for operating income, it goes back into the sales tax reserve. We can then use that on a number of items, including major repairs and equipment. And of course, in 2017, we saw the arena entrance C remodel, which cost as of the end of the year $1,789,646. We also can use that fund to pay up to $225,000 annually to the city of Wichita for parking lots, which we have not had to use, and then parking operations and maintenance of Second and St. Francis parking lot if we needed to do work there. So this slide shows then where we stand now with the arena's sales tax reserves at the end of 2017. At the beginning of the fourth quarter, the fund stood at $10,453,944. That balance is now at just less than $10 million. You can see the revenues that came in, in the fourth quarter, and you can also see a categorization of the expenses that occurred in the fourth quarter here. The next few slides actually go into much greater detail and show you what those actual expenses were. And certainly, we're happy to talk about any of those if you have questions, but most of those do relate to CIP projects, including the entrance C remodel, so LED lighting and other things at the arena. So in terms of comparing information for 2017 versus 2016, at the end of 2016, the balance in the ONM Reserve Fund stood at $12.5 million roughly. Again, that balance now stands at slightly less than $10 million. And again, about 1.8 million of that total cost was because of the entrance C remodel, which is certainly a much larger project than we typically see in a normal year. And with that, I am happy to stand for questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to A.J. for the second portion of the event, and we can answer questions after that, if you'd prefer.
We have questions from the commissioners? I have one quick question. We did repair on two broken windows. Do we have any insurance on that building?
There is insurance, but for those costs, because of the, the nature of the contract and the agreement, that would be something that we pay for out of the reserve fund.
We can't claim insurance? Weren't those shot out?
We would have, we would have a deductible of, I believe, at least $100,000, and I'll confirm that. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to invoke insurance at that point.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Okay.
Seeing none? Thank you. A.J. Welcome.
Take it away, A.J.
Good morning. A.J. Beleski, general manager for SMG and Intrust Bank Arena. Just wanted to give some highlights, and thank you to Lindsey for the great presentation. Highlights on our community involvement, you'll see the list there, a lot of ticket donations. We do some annual events in the fall that we're really proud of, the United Way campaign. We, we had a record participation and a record amount donated from our, our portion of the United Way campaign. We also were involved, we spent a day at the Kansas Food Bank, and also, we love doing the Salvation Army Angel Tree. It's kind of become a tradition within our staff, so we do those every year around Christmas time. Those are some of the community involvement events that we had. Upcoming events that we have, we are, obviously, there's a few big ones on the, on the near horizon. It seems like we've been talking about it for a few years now, the NCAA tournament. We are now closing in on a month away, and we are super excited for this event. A lot of time and effort has been spent. We want to thank the commission and Sedgwick County for all the support in getting several projects done last year. Lindsey referenced several of those. Obviously, the NCAA was a catalyst, but every, everybody that comes to our building and every event that we host is going to benefit from those improvements, so we're very happy to have those in place. Really kind of diving into the details at this point, being about a month out on the tournament. A lot of planning going into that, a lot of planning, I think, from the community and the city as a whole. I think it, it should probably be a, just a big giant party in downtown, which is all that weekend is what it sounds like. There's a lot of events going on. It's going to be a great time, great time to showcase our community that week, for sure. So we're looking forward to it. And then we also have Pink coming up, a major pop show for us and something that we haven't had a lot of in the past. We are excited to have her coming to town. That'll be March 3rd. It's a, pretty much a sold-out show at this point, and hopefully it'll lead to another one down the road. We've seen it in the past. We've had events, you know, Fleetwood Macs and the Eagles that have led to other events like Neil Diamond and Paul McCartney that we had last year. So hopefully, we'll see the same thing with this successful show here, and it'll lead to more similar, large-name events. We also recently just announced James Taylor and Bonnie Raitt coming up in May. We're excited about that one, and then Journey and Def Leppard in July. So those are a few of the upcoming events, and that's pretty much the report that I had for you today, so.
Thank A.J. Do we have any questions from the commissioners? I look forward to James Taylor. Got tickets for that.
It'll be a good one. I don't think Bonnie Raitt's ever been on Wichita before, so.
And Commissioner Unruh has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, A.J., it's another good report, and I appreciate, once again, the way that SMG and your team manages our arena. I think it's proven out to be what we wanted it to be, is a great entertainment and event facility in our community that gives people lots of options. And I, I think, I'm really proud of the fact, the way that you involve the community in community events, and the way that you're generous with tickets, so it's not just an exclusive use of the facility. So that's, I'm, I'm proud to see that you're managing it that way. Also, once again, I'm really happy to see the numbers of the way local businesses that you use to supply goods and services and the amount of sales tax you generate. So it turns out to be a really plus for the community, and just, once again, commend you all and your team for a great job.
We appreciate it very much. I think we mentioned it, but it was a third, ended up being the third-best year we've ever had from a financial standpoint, so behind the grand opening year and then our fifth anniversary year, this was the third-best one. So kudos to our entire team, lots of hours spent across the past year. And not only did we do it, but we did it during a year when one entrance was closed for seven months. So we appreciate our staff, all the effort, hours they put in, and also the community for supporting the events and coming out and selling out Paul McCartney and, and several other big events last year. So thanks for the compliments.
Good job. I think the entire community appreciates what you all do.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask, we, we've done a lot of, we've had a lot of discussion about the NCAA, and we've done a lot of things to get, to get ready for that. Can you give us a status, if there's anything that's still outstanding that needs to be done to get the facilities ready for the NCAA coming up?
You know, at this point, it's a lot of details. We've, we completed entrance C, which Lindsey talked about, which is going to allow, you know, and we were able to test it out back in December during Wichita State and Oklahoma during that game, and made some additional tweaks, so we will be able to maximize the number of of people coming back and forth through Old Town. We've completed, a part of that project was we put bollards around that plaza to kind of protect the folks lining up. We've also completed bollards around the entire facility at this point. So again, thank you to the county for your support in being able to complete those projects. We've converted all of our exterior lighting to LED now, so it's a much brighter facility around outside. At this point, a lot of details inside the building, so we're finished up, we're adding some drink rails on the concourses, we're adding some phone charging stations, those kinds of things that are important when you're talking about hosting 15,000 people throughout an entire day, which is going to be the case on March 15th. So a lot of that going on. And then we'll really dive into the details of what the tournament needs as far as setups and phone lines and power and that kind of thing. But we've got the infrastructure. It's all in place now. Now it's just a matter of setting it up and really diving into those details.
Just for a reminder, for Entrance C, can you kind of indicate, how did that final project cost come in compared to our initial estimates? We kind of talked about some numbers, but how do we come out at the end of the?
Yeah, so we had originally had it estimated about 2.1 million for that project. I think Lindsay said we ended up coming in at 1.789. So we came in less than what we originally thought, which was great, and we were able to do a couple of additional things in the process of that project as well.
That's fantastic. And can you talk about, we invested some in the wireless technology for the visitors to be able to get access to?
So we launched, we worked with Cox Communications and founding partner, one of the partners of the building, and also Hospitality Networks, which is a division of Cox. They did an arena out in Las Vegas last year, the T-Mobile Arena, and so we felt like they were a great selection for this project. We installed it back in October. We've been monitoring it ever since, and we've seen, it kind of depends on the demographics of the event. Thomas Rhett was our first show, much younger demographic, a lot more use on the Wi-Fi than some of the other shows like TransUnion Orchestra. So we also were able to monitor it during the Wichita State OU game, which was a great example of what we're going to see during the NCAA. So we've been able to tweak it, make it better. We actually have a couple of meetings coming up this week, just to continue to monitor that process, but so far, it's been really good.
I also want to say thank you to your great service to our community, and I like the report that Lindsay gave, and seeing a bigger check to the county is very exciting. So thank you for all you've done to manage this arena. I think you're doing a tremendous job and appreciate the great report this morning. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to receive and file.
Is that done? We have a motion and a second to receive and file. Do we have any other comments? Again, A.J., thank you very much for operating the arena for us. We certainly look forward to the tournament coming up in March, and I'm certain that we're ready for it.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the opportunity. We appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item F, a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the costs of 2018 bridge projects.
All right, Commissioners, Lindsay Porsso, your CFO again. The item before you now is a resolution pertaining to the funding of four bridge projects included in the 2018 capital improvement program you approved as part of your 2018 adopted budget last August. Those bridges include a bridge on 53rd Street North between 231st Street West and 247th Street West to be funded with $700,000 of bond proceeds. A bridge on 295th Street West between 45th Street North and 53rd Street North, which is to be funded with $550,000 of bond proceeds. A bridge on Pawnee between 127th Street East and 143rd Street East to be funded with bond proceeds of $800,000. And finally, another bridge on Pawnee between 143rd Street East and 159th Street East to be funded with bond proceeds of $800,000. The total amount of bonds to issue these projects, or to be issued for these projects is $2,850,000. And when we add transaction costs to that, you would be, what you'd be authorizing with the resolution is $2,945,000. This resolution authorizes the county's right to fund these projects with cash and then to reimburse ourselves down the road for those expenses from the proceeds of that bond sale, which we would expect to occur later this year. Again, those projects were in the adopted CIP for 2018, and so repayment of the bonds has been contemplated in every version of the forecast you've seen since the county manager presented his recommended budget to you last July. We do anticipate that the bonds require an estimated average annual debt service of about $195,000 over 20 years. The resolution doesn't require a protest period. The bonds are simply authorized as general obligation issues of Sedgwick County. As you know, we do have a debt policy that sets out five ratios, and when taken together, those benchmarks establish what is essentially our debt capacity or our debt limit. And we just talked about bonding a month ago. Nothing has changed. This was factored into those figures that you saw then. Again, we plan to be under four of the five benchmarks. The fifth one is the measure that essentially takes debt for all taxing entities in Sedgwick County and puts that on a per-member-of-the-population basis or per capita. That limit in our policy is $3,000. Right now, we're projecting that that will actually be closer to $3,800. Again, the driving force behind that is not necessarily Sedgwick County debt. That measure does reflect all debt for cities, school districts, townships, every taxing entity you can think of in this county goes into that factor. We are well below the ratio that sets Sedgwick County's per capita amount, and so really it's driven by those other communities. So we believe that that puts us well within tolerances that are acceptable for a community of our size. If you have any questions about any of this, I'm happy to answer it. Joe Norton are from Gilmore and Bell, who is the county's bond council, is also here, and I'd be happy to rope him into anything to help answer any technical questions if you might have any. And if that, or with that, I'm happy to stand for questions, or I recommend you authorize the resolution if there are none.
Thank you. Bottom line, what you just told us is that this is in our CIP. We've already approved the CIP back in August. It is within our debt limit, the policy that we've created, and it doesn't require us to raise our mill levy, anything, any additional tax on any of the citizens in Sedgwick County.
It's an accurate summary, sir, yes.
Very good. Do I have any? Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Lindsay, I appreciate your presentation and the analysis of what we're doing and why we're doing it. I have a question maybe for our county engineer, Mr. Spears. The projects that were selected here, they go through a very detailed prioritization process. Why are these bridges chosen rather than others?
Commissioner Unruh, David Spears, Sista County Manager, Public Works. We inspect all of our bridges every two years. We have 600 bridges, and we inspect them. They're given a sufficiency rating. We follow a computer program that is dictated to us by KDOT, and it's used throughout the state. And so we go by sufficiency rating. Any bridge under sufficiency rating of 50 should be replaced, and these are at the top of the list. We have several, I think we have actually about 40 bridges that are below sufficiency rating 50 that we need to do. Of course, we can't do them all at once, so we do a few per year. But yes, these are high priority.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. And, you know, that's what we're doing and why we're doing it and how we're doing it. I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Yes, Chair. Are there questions or comments? I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any none? Madam Clerk, I, it's not, I guess we can. Do you have something from the public to say?
Yes. Can I?
We don't usually have public comment during this time, but I don't have a problem with you speaking.
Yes, George Theo Harris, again, I'm actually on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, and I actually do have a bicycle, and I ride it. Not as much because my fiance thinks it's a demolition derby when we go out. But anyhow, what I wanted to ask you, while I've talked with two of you commissioners, when you guys are doing a bridge, and it's either in Wichita or maybe something Wichita's going to annex, could you please get bike, not bike lanes, but at least lanes so you can walk across the bridge? Because sometimes you'll have a bridge that goes to nowhere, be a sidewalk going up to it, but then, and it's much more expensive to put a sidewalk on a bridge after you've already put the bridge in with no sidewalk. So could you please look into that and think about that when you guys are doing bridges in and around Wichita or something that may be annexed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Theo Harris.
I can address that. We look at that on each bridge that we do, and we, like, a lot of times, they're near one of the small 20 cities, oh, no, they're not all small, but like Colwich out on 53rd. We put pedestrian lanes on it. And you are correct, it's easier to do it up front than it is later. And also, you have to realize, a bridge will last probably 50 years, so you have to anticipate what development might be and that sort of thing. So we're very cognizant of that, and we check with people. And now, if it's way out in the southwest corner of the county, no, we don't put sidewalks on it. But any round the more urban area, we do.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Spears. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, my friend, Mr. Theo Harris, used the phrase, "a bridge to nowhere." We don't do bridges to nowhere. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
We're not in Canada, or Alaska. Alaska. Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Item G, consideration of a resolution determining the advisability of issuing industrial bonds for project additions for Textron Aviation Incorporated.
Brent?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brent Shelton, I'm the Director of Economic Development and Tax Systems in the Division of Finance. This item is a result of an action that was taken yesterday at the City Council, where Wichita City Council approved by unanimous vote a letter of intent to issue tax-exempt industrial revenue bonds on behalf of Textron Aviation. You're considering that request today. I would also let you know that in the audience, we have a couple of representatives from Textron, Blake Mayen, who is the Vice President and General Counsel of Textron Aviation, Stephanie Harder, the Director of Employee and Community Engagement. Textron Aviation was created in 2014 when Textron Inc., who was the, at that time, the parent company of Cessna, acquired Hawker and Beechcraft, and they formed Textron Aviation to consolidate and to integrate those production and maintenance facilities. Textron and these, as these three combined companies represent the third-largest property taxpayer in the county. They're also the second-largest employer in Sedgwick County. Some of the things that they have going at this point in time, some major production and support segments throughout the county include their Citation family of business jets, the Caravan family of turboprop aircraft, Hawker and Beechcraft lines. They've also had world-class service and maintenance operations. They've also announced that they're in the early stages of developing the Citation Hemisphere, which is a large cabin jet, their entry into that market. So they have a lot of things going on in our community. Now, the bond proceeds, if approved, would be used in three of their facilities that are located adjacent to the city of Wichita, but in Sedgwick County. You have the Wallace Industrial District, which is basically located adjacent to the Wichita Eisenhower Airport. We have the Pawnee Industrial District, which is bounded on the east, or I'm sorry, on the west by Interstate 35, on the north by Pawnee, Rock Road to the east, and it sits north of McConnell Air Force Base. The third area is the Beach Wichita Industrial District, and in that area, we have the beach facilities that are bounded from Webb Road to Greenwich Road, east to west, and from 13th Street on the north down roughly to Kellogg. The $434.8 million bond request that was approved yesterday by the City Council would be to issue industrial revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed that $434.8 million. The breakdown of expenditures are about $24.4 million in real property, buildings and improvements. The balance of $410.4 million would be for machinery and equipment. All of these would carry a 100% tax exemption. As I mentioned earlier, Textron is the second-largest employer in Sedgwick County. They currently employ 9,000 people in this region. What they are seeking is a 100% tax abatement on those industrial revenue bonds for a period of five-plus-five years. Municipalities are allowed by state law to grant tax exemptions on industrial revenue bonds for a period of 10 years. So the city could issue these, this blank in exemption for 10 years. Their policy now calls for a look at the performance of the company that has received the benefit of the industrial revenue bonds at the five-year period and determine whether or not an additional five-year exemption will be allowed. The threshold for maintaining the exemption at that five-year period for the second five years is that Textron will maintain the current level of employment that they have in the Sedgwick County area. Originally, when this was presented, and I think they still anticipate that they will increase employment levels, but the threshold for this is maintenance of the existing level of employment. Sedgwick County and Wichita's economic development policy calls for a study to be done to determine whether or not the deal makes sense. We've engaged the Center for Economic Development and Research at Wichita State University to perform this analysis, and county policy requires that the benefit-to-cost ratio for the county be equal to or exceed 1.3 to 1. The analysis that we received indicates a 1.91 to 1 benefit-to-cost ratio in that analysis, so it does exceed the county's minimum threshold. Basically, they anticipate 2.9 million in economic development benefits versus a million and a half in costs to the county. Since these improvements will occur in the area outside the city limits of Wichita, they are part of the County Fire District. One of the conditions of the granting of the industrial revenue bonds and that tax exemption is a fire protection agreement between Textron and the County Fire District. That fire protection agreement is, will be similar to those that we've done in the past. Basically, the County Fire District is made whole. As improvements occur, those improvements, times what the mill levy is for the Fire District, will equal a service fee that Textron will pay to the Fire District. It's the same calculation that would be performed to calculate their tax. It's just a service fee because the exemption applies to all tax authorities that, within which the area of the improvements are going to be located. At the conclusion of the exemption periods, the 10-year periods that are staggered throughout this 20-year of projects, there's about $24.4 million in taxable real estate that would go onto the tax roll. So what we're foregoing, about $1,009,000 in property tax benefits or property taxes because of the exclusion or the exemption on real estate, that will come back on the roll and be taxable to Sedgwick County at the conclusion of these exemptions. Basically, you have now before you three options. One is that you can adopt a resolution that would approve the city's resolution to authorize the issuance of the tax-exempt industrial revenue bonds. You could choose to adopt a resolution that would deny the city's resolution, or you could take no action. If you take no action, that will allow the letter of intent for the IRB issuance to go forward, the same as if there was an affirmative vote, which was your first option. At this point, I will open up for any questions or comments that you have, and in following a good leader, I might lean on Joe Norton for legal expertise as well.
Thanks, Brent. Do we have any questions from any of the commissioners? Commissioner Randzow?
Yeah, Brent, I have some questions. So this is not about new jobs. There's expectations they'll keep the same level of employment. Now, is there some sort of clawback provision or contract?
Yes. At the five-year look, if the level of employment is below the 9,000, the current level of employment at the beginning of that exemption, the city can, would go in and reduce the amount of the exemption. So let's say that jobs are down by 10%. The way their policy is written, they have a 10- policy is written, they'd have a 10% reduction in the amount of the exemption. So, instead of 100%, they'd have a 90% exemption going forward.
That's per-city policy?
Yes.
It's not a clawback, it's a reduction in the exemption going forward?
Correct.
Was there anything in writing that would prevent them from not following policy or giving it anyway, or we don't have any protection in this contract? Like, we have in some of the others, like, for example, the Spirit, that there was, it was actually in the contract?
Right.
But there's nothing in this?
No, because, and the difference between this one and the Spirit contract was that the money that the county is extending to have an equity position in the building, if they don't meet the thresholds, then that money could be clawed back.
Right.
In this case, it's a tax exemption.
So, we really don't have a guarantee in writing. We have the expectation, and there really is no clawback then. There's, it would be going forward. And just with respect to this, because the IRBs, I'm not opposed to IRBs, but it's the property taxes, the goal, property tax abatement, 100% property tax abatement on the, on the real property, which is, and it gets sales tax exemption as well, but...
Correct.
So, now, this ROI that we have here, you know, it talks about, it does a calculation, and we've had this issue before in the past. The calculation is based on 20 years of benefits, but the, the term itself, the abatement is, is 10 years. I mean, why, I mean, the term, the abatement and the return on investment, I mean, because the commitment to jobs, whether or not the increase or staying the same is for 10 years, but then we're calculating the return on investment for 20 years, and that's a mismatch. We've had this, it's been a few years. That's problematic. I think that, I mean, there's no guarantee after the 10 years that we have anything. There's really, in this one, there's no guarantee we'll get anything anyway, but...
Yeah. So, I understand that this, this 20-year period is because there are about five different projects that have different start times. So, there's potential to have five different 10-year periods of exemptions going on that would overlap. So, the whole project is anticipated to go on for 20 years, but you may have a $50 million investment in year two and a $100 million investment in year three, and those carry different start dates for the 10-year exemption.
I understand, but you're assuming the benefit is jobs for the whole 20 years, and that isn't necessarily true. That's an issue that we have, not just with this, this one, but all the other things. They need to match up, because otherwise, it skews the numbers. Now, another thing I think is important to talk about here is, we're talking about, these IRBs will give about $1.9 million in property, in property tax abatements for the county.
From the real estate portion.
Okay, but that's not the whole picture. I think people need to understand how these things work. I mean, you have the building itself, and then you have all the machinery and equipment that goes inside the building. Now, several years ago, the state passed a law that exempted all machinery and equipment, which affects us here locally. I think, maybe at least one of my colleagues was here and didn't, wasn't really appreciative of that, but nevertheless, it applies to everybody. You don't have to, you know, pick one business or another, but this, this, that is the incentive that, that encourages businesses to stay here and to expand here. Obviously, if they're already here, it's, a lot of times, cost-prohibitive move anyway. But that, this is the one that we don't talk about a lot, okay? So, the value on this one is over $32 million of property tax abatements. But what we're talking about today is $1.9 million on the building, but $32 million for machinery and equipment. There is no clawback for that, because that's state law.
That's correct.
That will happen, no matter what the jobs are.
That's not, it's not taxable.
It, it doesn't matter. And I'm not bemoaning that, I'm just saying, we need to put that on the table. That amount of money is not included in the ROI calculations either, even though it does affect, of course, well, affects, in this case, the county, the state, Wichita School District and Hayesville School District. So, I'd be supportive of these IRBs if they didn't include the 100% tax reduction on the buildings. Because that amount, if you look at the whole picture of over $34 million worth of tax abatements, the part we're talking about here today is about 5.6% of that. So, if we don't approve this, then they'll have to pay about 5.6% of the overall tax bill, which you would have normally expected. And I think, I don't think that's unreasonable to say, "Hey, let's, let's have you pay 5.6% of this," because the state, I'm telling you, this, this exemption on machinery and equipment is a big deal. I don't think a lot of states have this, and it's very powerful. That's the mother of all incentives for, for, for a lot of businesses here in the state, okay? And we can't forget about that. We focus on this 1.9, but there's $32 million other dollars that are out there. And so, I think, I don't think I'm going to be supportive with 100% property tax abatement here on the building. I'll make this very clear. What we're here today to do is to vote on the abatement of $1.9 million. We're not here to vote on the project itself. I fully support the project and what they're doing. That's their decision to make, and I believe they've, they've made it. I think it's obviously cost-effective for them. They're already here. You get this $32 million tax abatement, and that's fine. But we don't have a say on that decision. We just have a say on whether this is property tax abatement, and we often talk about, you know, we're limited on funds and this, that, and another, and I just, I just don't think it's unreasonable to say, "Hey, well, can you chip in 5.6% of what you would normally have to pay?" I say, yes. I think that's okay. Especially since this really isn't about adding more jobs, and there really is no clawback provision for any of it, like we have in the past. For a small portion of it, we can rely on the city in five years to make some adjustments. But, so, I think, I mean, when these things come up, we have to look at all the information, all the details, and kind of consider everything out there, and, and that's why I'll vote the way I do, and, because I got to look out for the whole community. And I respect and appreciate the decision by Textron, but I also have to look out for the taxpayers, and we do have some roads and bridges and a variety of other stuff that we have to pay for. And I think most of us in the community, if we just had to pay 5.6% of what we would normally have expected, I think we'd be happy. So, I would, I would encourage my colleagues to, well, if we approve the IRBs, just to do it without the property tax abatement. I'm not sure if there's any value to that or not, but I know I'm likely the only one have this view. But these numbers are very, very telling. Keep in mind, the total abatement is $34 million, and it was designed as an incentive. It's, it's used by the partnership and other entities to tell businesses, "Hey, this is what we have here. This is something we have in Kansas that may not have in other states." So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent, thanks for the presentation, and our friends from Textron, sorry, I almost said Cessna, but Textron, thank you for coming. I just heard that there's not jobs, new jobs included with this, but in this, in, in your paperwork, it shows that there's 250 new jobs. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I received a revised analysis this morning with no jobs, and it gives us a 1.56 to 1 benefit-to-cost ratio. So, we're still within that threshold.
Right. Okay. So, the, so the 250 is yesterday's and no additional jobs is today's?
It was just, because that was the threshold, it was ratcheted down to include no jobs and see if it still fits, and it does.
Okay, perfect. Well, just want to make sure on that, because there still is the indirect jobs from the 9,000 base employment, which I think is phenomenal that, that we're going to guarantee that Textron is going to keep that, that threshold of 9,000. Of course, I think the goal for Textron is to grow a lot more as the demand rises with the economy that seems to be on the rise, and aviation as a whole seems to be doing a lot better now than it has over the last several years. So, so I think that's absolutely a minimum. But I, I think this is, this is great, coming off the heels of a pretty successful 2017 when it comes to our aviation sector, and I think this is a great way to really kick off 2018. So, thank you, Brent, and thanks for coming.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. Well, first of all, thank you for the presentation. Well done, and I thank you for a good explanation to what this is all about. But one question, is this $24.4 million, that actually is planned to be a capital improvement on one of their, one or all of their properties, some way? They're going to actually go in to do some capital investment there?
Yeah. It's buildings, new buildings, improvements to real estate in those facilities that are located outside the city.
Very good. And down the road, whether it be five years or 10 years, but some point down the road, this, this commercial assessed value does come on the tax rolls at some point down the road?
That is correct. At the conclusion of that exemption period, those real property improvements go on the tax roll.
Okay. And at that point, I'll make a, I'll make a comment that the, the tax revenue from that will be a benefit to Sedgwick County to provide services and all of that. I would say, one of my things I look at when I consider things like this is, is there a cost of government during that five- or 10-year period? And I guess, in my opinion, is that I don't think there's going to be any cost to Sedgwick County government in terms of any, any of the services we provide. That hasn't already been discussed. You know, the Fire District's probably the biggest thing, but in terms of, you know, other services we provide, Health Department and Calm Care, and just go down the list of all the things we provide, I don't think there's going to be a significant cost in terms of Sedgwick County government because of this abatement. This is going to be new construction or improvements, I should say. But one thing this does do, provides, again, is stable employment. That was one of the issues I talked about during the Spirit Aerosystems discussion, is that stable employment is a big deal. We know the, the roller coaster of aviation jobs in this community, and to have someone commit to a 9,000 job level and even talk about potentially adding 250 jobs, that is, that is a good thing for this community. And I, I've experienced the roller coaster personally. I have a lot of friends and family who have experienced the roller coaster, and so, right now, we've got Spirit that's made a, a long-term commitment at their peak employment, and now, we see Textron Aviation doing the same things essentially. I would just like to point out, they have choices. And if, if we don't, I guess, encourage them to, to do this here in our community, they can go anywhere. A lot of other communities would love to have Textron Aviation set up a plant in their own community. I'm sure there're going to be, a lot of other communities that would love to see them come, and they would be willing to give them a lot more than what we're discussing here today. And so, I think this is a good option for us. It does increase our tax revenue down the road. It doesn't cost us anything in the meantime. We have a promise of jobs, and in my opinion is, our history is, we have approved IRBs for manufacturing companies in the past. I don't think this ought to be an exception. And so, I am, am grateful for this opportunity this morning, and with that, I would make a, a motion that we would, let me see what's the proper motion here, that we would agree with, with Wichita and approve the IRBs for Textron Aviation as presented.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'm going to be supportive of the motion. I'm, I'm pleased that Textron wants to invest in our community, and I think that this is a way for us to show them that we want to be good partners and, and we're respectful of what they're doing in terms of employment and capital investment in our community. My question, though, is, these bonds are going to be issued through the city of Wichita.
Correct.
And this property is located outside the city limits of Wichita.
Right.
Is that arrangement just because of history of way things been doing? I mean, it just seems like county's not being asked to issue, and the city is, and yet, the property's in, in the county. I just was, wanted clarification.
I think a couple of things would contribute to that. One is that municipalities, cities are granted authority by state law to issue industrial revenue bonds in a three-mile area outside their city limits. The second thing that I think has contributed to this, if you go back to 2014, when Textron Aviation was formed, the two different companies that came together, Beach and Cessna, we had been issuing industrial revenue bonds for Beach, city for Cessna. I think they looked to a common municipality to handle all their issues going forward, and at that time, it was agreed that it would be the city of Wichita.
All right. Well, that's not an objection from my perspective, it's just a clarification. So, thank you for that.
You bet.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, if, if, if my colleague really believes there's no cost of government related to this, and then we can just give 100% property tax abatement for this program, this new construction, then let's extend that same property tax abatement to all new construction within Sedgwick County for all businesses. If you want to do that, I'll do that. If there's no cost to government, let's let everybody expand their business property tax-free. Everybody. Let's, let's not just pick winners and losers now. Let's do it for everybody. If there's no cost, if you really believe that. But think about that. We wouldn't even begin to contemplate that. We'd be, I mean, this just makes sense. Now, that being said, but I'm willing to support that. If we want to adopt that policy, let's give 100% property tax abatement to every business in town that, that expands. Every single one. So, you've got a new ROI this morning.
Right.
We don't have that.
Right. I just received it before.
I need a copy of that. I think it would be wise for us to not make a decision today, since we don't even have an accurate ROI in our hands. How can we make a good decision when we don't even have accurate data? So, I'll make a substitute motion that we table this until we get the information and reconsider this in a week.
We have a substitute motion. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent, are we under some sort of timeframe where this has to be approved by us? I mean, would that take us outside the timeframe?
You have a seven-day window from the time that you were notified of this, which was yesterday. So, is it seven days after their first meeting after? So, okay.
So, a week delay would, would still be within that timeframe? I mean, I don't want to...
Would not.
Would not. All right. So, the, the motion on the table that has yet to be seconded would eventually then kill this program. Is that right? No?
Well, the motion, if you delay it, it's option three. You've taken no action, so it's like an affirmative vote. It happens anyway.
Okay, very good. Appreciate that. And then, one other comment while I have the floors that, in part of this agreement, you mentioned it, that they have payment in lieu of taxes to our Fire District. So, that particular cost to government, to government is being, that cost is being provided for by Textron?
Correct.
Okay. And that's a clarification. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. But we still have a substitute motion on the table currently. With the substitute motion, though, it would have essentially approved the IRBs. Is that your intention?
No, we could always have another meeting before then. We've done it before. We could have a special meeting and, and say no, if, if we wanted to. We, I mean, we do that occasionally. But, I mean, it's, I've made motions before that weren't seconded, but I'm just, I do what I, do what I think's right, and we'll see what happens.
All right. I just wanted to clarify your motion.
Commissioners, before we move on, if we did a special session, it'd have to be tomorrow or Friday, because Monday is a holiday. Just keep that in mind.
Or Tuesday.
Or we could do it Tuesday.
We have a substitute motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion fails due to less, lack of second. Thank you.
Seems to be a common theme here.
Okay, Brent, I have a question.
Okay.
We're talking about foregoing $1.9 million in property tax, correct?
Right.
If they don't build anything, how much property tax do we get?
Get no additional property tax.
So, what we're doing, talking about is deferring for a period of time before we get property tax.
Right.
But if we take, if we don't approve this, we're not going to get any additional property tax whatsoever.
No, because it would be, the financing wouldn't be in place for those improvements.
We're not going to get a guarantee that we're going to have 9,000 workers here.
That is right.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Well, keep in mind, I, I don't think this whole deal hinges on 1.9. They're giving $32 million worth of property tax, of abatement. So, but that's, that's the whole question we go back to the but for. If, if only we do this, and that's kind of the scare tactics that are used that are pushed politicians to do this. But the, the state legislature took this action for a reason, give this machinery and equipment exemption. It's very powerful, and I think that's, that's all we need to do, and I, and I think 5, 5.6% of the property tax is not asking too much. I, I bet you this would proceed anyway. I bet you they find a way to do that. So, with that being said, I certainly can't support moving forward when we don't even have the accurate data. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you all for joining us today, we appreciate it very much. Next item.
Item H, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on February 8, 2018.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, and the meeting that was conducted on February 8 of the Board of Bids and Contracts, we have one item to present to you this morning. This item is the auction services for five parcel lots identified as Wichita Greyhound Park for Facilities Department. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Biz Core Pros Incorporated, doing business as Lang Real Estate, for the rates listed and to the completion of the project. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of this item.
Thank you. What I understand is that this is for sale of the land under the Greyhound Park plus another couple of parcels, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the way that it's drawn out the winning bid has no buyer's premium, does have 1% to the broker, 2.5 commission. It appears that this is the direction that the commission has asked you to go, to put together an opportunity to auction this piece of property. So this is just following up on the action that we've already directed you to take, correct?
Correct, sir.
Very good. That's all my questions. Do I have any questions from any of the Commissioners? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I move we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
We have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second the motion. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve Consent Agenda Items India Through Quebec.
Do I have a motion for India Through Quebec?
I move that we approve Consent Calendar, India Through Quebec.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Good morning, Will.
Commissioners, William Dear, Assistant County Counselor, got three updates for you. House Bill 2509, which was the election commissioner budget bill, passed out of committee unanimously. There's not a date where it's going to be out on the floor that I know of yet, but it'll be voted on by the House, I would assume, in the next week or so. House Bill 2597, which designated Sedgwick County as an urban area, was voted out of committee actually yesterday, so that's a fresh update, just here in the last day. And then, House Bill 2560, which was the bill creating the Cyber Security Act, where we had a lot of concerns about the new fees that were going to be charged for our employees to access various state databases. That bill was worked last Friday, but they didn't actually take a vote on it. Recent updates are that the sheriff is actually exempt, but whether the treasurer and some of our other executive-type offices are exempt is still up in the air. I don't expect that bill probably to go anywhere this session. I think it'll end up in an interim study, but I'd be open to any questions on those three bills or any other topics.
Thank you. We still have our opposition with 2560.
2560, and then there's a companion Senate bill. I don't recall the number, but Tom Sloan introduced bills in both chambers, they're identical bills.
Okay, very good. Do I have questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just curious, Senate Bill 299, is that the same as House Bill 2509?
No, Senate Bill 299, I believe, is the bill that would actually bring the election commissioner appointment under the power of the Board of County Commissioners, so it goes a step further, not just the budget, but actually the appointment, which would take all the power away from the Secretary of State with the four election commissioners and the four largest counties.
But there was a companion bill to 2509 in the Senate. Do you know that number by chance?
I do not, off the top of my head, but I'll get it for you, sir.
I think 299 had a hearing yesterday. Did we provide testimony to that?
We did not.
Okay. So some of the folks on the committee there are asking questions about whether we support that bill or not. I guess we need to reach out to them before they work that bill, and let them have a status that we do support the other bill, but I think that 299 maybe goes a step too far. So anyway, I think we have an opportunity to communicate, hopefully today or so, because they might, it's getting to the turnaround date here coming up, so we need to be aggressive to get that, to get our opinion, I guess, on these bills to the committee members before we lose our opportunity.
Okay, yeah, as in my understanding, when we voted on our legislative agenda, we were just supporting the bill for the budget for the election commissioners as opposed to the appointment, so...
Okay. Well, again, 2509 moved out of committee, do we know if the Senate bill that's similar to that, did it move? It didn't go anywhere?
No.
Okay. I anticipate that it still could happen, and if that did happen, they would just go right to conference. They may not even swap bodies, so, all right, so, that's my only question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
Next item.
Other.
Commissioners, does anyone have any other items that they'd like to discuss today? Seeing none, we don't have an executive session scheduled today? Anything else come before the board? Seeing nothing, we're adjourned.